Member Agency Director, Authority Member Johnson. Man.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Crist.
Present.
Mayor, Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you.
Move to excuse Senator Johnson?
Second. So happy you remembered her name. You saw him pause there, didn't you? He was searching for the name.
Well, it was either that or Councilwoman Johnson, but I didn't want to be not politically correct.
But it was usually Mayor Paris we're excusing, so I see your hesitation.
Yeah.
Ooh. Ooh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? It's hard being mayor, I want you all to know that. It's really hard.
At least we have good spirit. It's the time of year for giving.
And giving. Okay, Pastor Chris Johnson from Grease Chapel is going to do the prayers. And if you would include something for my colleagues here.
I'll pray for peace. Thank you for, thank you to all of you for serving our community and our city so effectively. And it is a pleasure, really, to partner with you for the good of our citizens, so I'm honored to pray tonight. Let's pray together. Father, I do thank you so much for everybody who's around this platform right now. I thank you for the service of our city council members. Father, thank you for the city staff. God, we are blessed to live in the city of Lancaster, and we pray that you would do exceedingly abundantly, more than we could ask or imagine, in this city. I pray that you would strengthen our people, Father, that you would bless in this land, and Father, I pray that you would give even special wisdom for this meeting tonight. And Lord, I pray particularly for each of the people gathered around here who I consider friends, that you would just give them extra strength as they work hard in their service. And I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. And Troop 111 is going to do the flag salute for the Fledge of Legions.
Flag guard. Hand up those colors. All those in uniform, please salute. Please place your right hand over your heart. Flag guard. Priests and colors. Please join me in the Fledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every duty and justice for all.
Two. Flag guard. Host. Flag guard. Before. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. City Manager, any items to be removed from the agenda?
No, sir.
Thank you. We're going to change the agenda and move item NB5 to the top, Better Built Home Program. And City Clerk, we have any communications?
No communications.
Thank you. And Mr. Ludick, you're doing the...
Good evening, Mayor Paris and members of the city council. We're here this evening to present for your approval a program that we feel is another important step forward for our city, known as the Better Built Home Program. We believe that the program we're going to describe to you is aligned very, very well with several of the city's core principles. That include innovation, a business-friendly approach, and sustainability for the long term. Before I describe to you the specifics of the proposed program, I think it's important that you hear a little bit of the background as to how this program came about and was developed. And for that, I'm going to ask Jim Vos, the chairman of our planning commission, to step forward and give you a little bit of background and history.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor. Members of the city council. Back in July, the city staff presented to the planning commission for review and comment a concept to require LED light fixtures for all new construction projects. After discussion with the commission, it was decided, first of all, to form a working group that would include three members of the planning commission, along with key city staff, and representatives of the building industry, construction trades, and home builders to review the proposal. The working group met several times and considered information from the various stakeholders. Ultimately, this working group developed a broader approach with an objective of encouraging new residential construction to incorporate a range of innovative, cost savings, and sustainable features, excuse me. This Better Built Home Program was presented to the entire planning commission by city staff in November. The commission discussed the various components of the program, asked a lot of questions about alternatives and approaches that were considered, and ultimately reached a consensus to recommend to the city council adoption of this program that will be presented by Mr. Ludick. I'd like to point out that this commission did discuss whether the recommendations should be mandatory or go with an incentivized volunteer approach, similar to what the city has done many times in the past. Majority of the commission felt that it was, that the initial program should be on a voluntary basis, on the part of residential building community, with appropriate incentives to encourage this industry to begin moving in a sustainable direction, overall a voluntary approach. This approach sends a clear signal to the building community that the city is open and supportive of these approaches while not creating a burdensome regulatory environment. It allows individual builders the opportunity to choose, to take risks, and to determine market acceptability. It also creates an opportunity to act as a demonstration city for the residential industry as a whole. Mr. Ludick will continue the presentation. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Vos. As noted, the program seeks to encourage, through various incentives, the incorporation of a number of innovative, cost-saving, and sustainable features in new residential construction. And I'd like to give the council a rundown on what is included in the recommended program. These were discussed and recommended to be part of this effort by the working group that Mr. Vos described. One of them, obviously, water conservation, starting with some of the very, very basic things that we've seen already in our community. Low water using attractive landscaping. A more innovative approach builds on that to use some, an approach known as subsurface irrigation that reduces the loss of landscape irrigation water from evaporation, wind, and runoff. But we also know that water conservation can happen inside the home itself, for instance, with the use of what are known as water sense-type fixtures. And we're hoping that builders are going to begin to use even gray water recycling systems. This one, which happens to be produced by a company known as Nexus E Water, actually provides savings in terms of water and energy because it reuses heat. We also are looking to encourage further what the city has already gone a long way in, in terms of alternative energy. Solar and wind systems, certainly. The city has in place right now a mandatory solar requirement for new residential construction, but this program would give an incentive for the building community to go beyond that basic minimum that we've already established. We're also hoping that they will, through this incentive effort, look at more innovative things, too. That would include vehicle charging stations, looking at energy storage systems in houses. And we think that this is a direction that's going to come anyway, but we think that we can help incentivize that beginning for our residents earlier. And we think that our home builders can be an effort towards that. We'd also like to encourage even more in the way of lighting fixtures that are more efficient. We'd like to make sure that our builders are using the most efficient possible appliances, and the incentive program would reward them for that also. And we haven't forgotten about the overall environment in the community as a whole. They would also be able to get benefit in this program if they were to use things such as smog-eating tile and the recycling of their construction waste, which obviously is an important factor in reducing the amount of the load that goes into our landfills, or even the possibility of this ending up as waste in the desert. Now, this isn't the best slide for seeing, but it does show how we would do this program. Essentially, the program would provide incentives, which include a 25% reduction in city development impact fees, waiving of the requirement for backyard landscaping, and we would give successful builders the ability to use the city's recycled water system water for free if they meet a certain amount of points during the evaluation process. And they would have to score these points in a number of different categories. There are three basic categories. They would have to score at least 10 points, and they would need to score them in at least two categories. And those categories would enable that what we're getting is a range of things in these homes that we're providing the incentive reward for. The value of the incentives, in staff's estimate, would range somewhere between $12,000 and, or $9,000 and $12,000 per dwelling unit. About $3,000 of that would be the actual reduction in development impact fees. So the rest would be value that they would get, particularly from the ability to use recycled water for construction, dust control, and things of that type. As Chairman Vos noted, the program is recommended to be voluntary at this point, but we do believe, as a staff, and the commission noted this also in their discussion, that it can be a starting point for a very dramatic shift in the community. I think Chairman Vos hit on a very important point when he said that doing this type of program sends a signal to the development community that we, as a city, are willing to welcome their innovation. And that is a very, very important factor because builders, even if they were interested in using these types of systems, are not as likely to go into a community where they don't feel that that would be welcome, or where they have to explain themselves a lot as to why they would want to use it. We're saying, our city is open, ready, welcome, and we will provide you an incentive to go forward in this manner. I'd really like to thank the individual planning commissioners who are part of the working group. I believe a couple of them actually spoke to the council last month and gave an update, Mr. Molly, Mr. Torassiano, and Vice Chairman Hall. And I'd also like to thank representatives from the Building Industry Association, the home building industry, and the construction trades, as well as city staff members who were a part of this working group. We are recommending to you the adoption of the resolution that's before you approving the Better Built Home Program. I do believe there's representatives here who may wish to speak to you about this program and their impressions of it. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Thank you. Marta Brown?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I am here, I am Marta Golding-Brown. I am the Government Affairs Director for the Building Industry Association Los Angeles Ventura Chapter. Please excuse me, I have laryngitis from fighting. I am here to support this ordinance as it goes through, and especially the fact that, and we appreciate the fact that it is an incentivizing ordinance to the construction and residential construction industries. We did, we did sit on the task force, we were working with them. There are a lot of innovative things that are out there that some of our, some builders are doing certain things, other builders are doing others. I think they've been brought together very nicely in this ordinance, but I think it also allows the opportunity that if new things come on the market, like different types of lighting and things that they're developed, it allows us to bring it back to the table and say, we would like to put this as part of the program versus that. And I, and I really would like to express my appreciation to staff, all the staff that we've worked with at this point, and, and management in making this an incentive program, because I think that that's really going to help our builders do something more creative with their products. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments?
I think so. Just, I think Mayor and I were discussing one day, we're trying to compare the homes that we're developing in our city today to something, I think I said something like Disneyland Tomorrowland. Is that what, and then you had reminded me that Tomorrowland doesn't even exist anymore? Kind of made me realize how long it's been since I've been at Disneyland. But this is really, I mean, a great project, and this really is, for us and our city, Tomorrowland. So, very exciting, and again, kudos to Chairman Vos and Raj, and also Mr. Torassiano, worked very hard, and we appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
I just want to say thank you to the planning commission for what they've done. They worked hard on this. They brought it all together. Jim, you've done a wonderful job. You've got a great planning commission. All three of you have done wonderful work there, but bringing this all together. I know that when we're looking at this, and some of the stuff, like the subsurface water, we've already done with the new Kaiser building, and all, all the stuff that we're doing, we've done, but we haven't done it collectively. So putting it all together really works, and I appreciate you guys for what you do. And with that, I'd like to make a motion, we adopt Resolution Number 14-76.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Mr. Vos, I want you to look into the possibility of an ordinance that would shift the cost of power to the homeowner instead of the tenant. Would you do that for me?
Sure.
Thank you. The, the reason for that is, is because there's no incentive for apartment owners and, and people that have, you know, lots of rental units to go to LED lighting, to go to energy-saving appliances, to, to do all of the energy-saving things, because they don't pay the bill. In fact, they're disincentivized to do it. And I wanted to see if it's possible. If we shift that cost, what would the effect of it be? And you're obviously the most creative planning commission out there, so it seems, and then if you can get the building industry to buy off on that, we'll probably give you an award. Thank you. The work that was done by the subcommittee, the three members of the planning commission that participated and volunteered when I appointed them, they were very, very pleased and anxious to participate. But I must say that our city staff is the greatest group of folks to work with, and the stakeholders in this community are more than willing to participate. So, we're on the right track. I think so. And we really want to say thank you to our community and our city staff. Thank you. You know, from this, for the staff, I can't tell you how many times I hear that. I mean, from people who do business with the city, it's, I can't remember the last time I heard a negative. It's always positive, and it's always a comparison of the difference of doing business in this city, and I appreciate you for that. Thank you. Lancaster Power Authority Actions Consent Calendar. We have speaker cards. Any items to be removed, other than, I guess it's just item one, isn't it? Okay. Who's doing the presentation on CC1?
PA CC1.
Mayor, before you tonight, this is one of the items. There's also a second lease item on the agenda. This is for a lease on property that we, we own next to the soccer center. As you'll see by the map, there has been three projects leased at that location. One project, which is Somas FMGs, which you see by the tan triangle, has been constructed and is operational. There are two other facilities, Solar City and Morgan Solar, which you are being asked to approve tonight. These leases are on city property and for the construction of 1.5 megawatts each solar, about 20 acres apiece. They're going to be submitted to Southern California Edison through the REMAT program, and they're the lease to us, and one of the sites is $2,100 per acre on an annual basis, and the other is a $1,500 per acre on an annual basis. And we would request that you approve these tonight, so they can move forward with construction and operation.
How long's the lease?
The leases are for 20 years.
Thank you. Okay, we have, any questions? Kurt Boyer?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I actually should have spoken on the last subject, but I knew it had something to do with energy conservation. For 25 years, I've devoted my career to designing large distribution centers, such as Michaels and Rite Aid, and everything that goes inside there, the computers, the software, the conveyor systems, robotics, and what have you. But what I also got to do was I got to do the lighting. Now, for several years, what I have done is working with smaller industrial complexes. I'm not going to bore the council with exact numbers and such, but generally, smaller facilities have what's called a metal halide fixture. It's a large dome fixture that hangs up close, and 25 years ago, it was state-of-the-art. However, now, we were talking about LED, which is coming for these facilities, but right now, what these facilities can put in is what's called a T-PHY fixture. It's a fluorescent. It runs on half the electricity that the current fixtures will run on. And it can be put on motion sensors, whereas a metal halide cannot. By the time it's said and done, if you take a 10,000-square-foot warehouse, a small facility, you're going to be able to cut the power that they're going to be using inside the distribution area and the storage area by easily 60 to 70 percent. Edison also will give rebates for every fixture that's replaced. So by the time it's said and done, on a single, a single shift operation, these facilities will have a return on investment within, oh, about 13, 14 months. If they go to a three-shift, you're talking about five to six months to replace these fixtures. After that, of course, the company now pockets the profit off the electric bill. Now, I've heard people talking about this earlier, about the possibility of city participation, as far as rebates as well. We can easily go to all these small locations and be able to convince them, and even if it's by the owner, even if they're leasing the facility, the owner gains an advantage because the next time a new customer comes in, he's able to tell that customer, your electric bill's going to be half. So, I got 30 seconds left. I do offer my, my services to the city. I'd love to work with you guys on this. I'm amazed how much you get involved in energy conservation. Trust me, most cities do not do this sort of thing. And I felt that I would bring this up this evening and put it out there for further, for their consideration.
Thank you. Michael Reeves?
Mayor, Paris, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. I have a few comments about this agreement, this solar energy lease agreement. We're amending the original agreement, and this agreement amends the Morgan's lease payments from a percentage of gross revenue to a fixed rate. Did anybody calculate what the potential gross revenue was? Has anyone done that? Another thing, in my dealings with energy companies, I, I'll give you an example. I had a lease with coal underneath it, and a coal company approached me, and they said, we'll give you $1,700 if you let us buy your lease. And I said, how about this? You give me $2,000, and I'll let you lease it. And they agreed to it. I wonder if we played hardball enough with the solar company to get a bigger percentage. Instead of $400 acres per year, and then $1,500 per acre per year when operational, I think we should have gone for the high total of $1,500. And that would prompt them to go ahead and, and move quickly because they know that they'll have to pay us the higher amount outstanding, and we don't have to go back and, and visit this agreement again. So, my objection is that we didn't go for the top amount in, in this amendment of the revenue share. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Still a motion?
I'll move we approve PP or PA CC1.
I second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Consent calendar?
Nothing for the minutes. Motion to approve the minutes, M1.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Consent calendar?
Hey, we have one speaker card, numerous CC items.
Remove CC6, CC2, and CC12. Is there a motion on the remaining items?
Ron, did you want to remove CC4?
Yes or no?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. And remove CC4.
Motion to approve the consent calendar as currently comprised.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Want us to vote?
Yeah.
Let's vote. Oh, that's right. How did you guys do that?
No questions.
It's unanimous. I really should pay attention. Okay. We have a speaker on CC6, 2, and 12. That's Michael Reeves.
Mayor, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. I only have three minutes, so I'm going to pick the one that I'm really concerned about, and the consent calendar, that's CC6. You know, we're not going to be here forever, and Calvin, Jason, and Mark are not going to be here forever. And what we're doing is giving the city manager, delegating authority to execute lease agreements. I think that's a bad precedent. I think that should be reserved like it is for the council and whomever they delegate temporarily to handle it. I don't feel that this should be a permanent thing for the city manager, even though the city staff is very well qualified right now. I think in the future, this might slide through, and we may get into trouble in, in sometime in the future because we delegated this authority to someone in the future that we don't know of. Thank you.
It makes sense. Why are we doing this? Why are we doing this?
We're doing it because it's a matter of business. The part of the code allows me to enter, or city manager, to enter agreements. We do it for the incubator, and we have for several years. This expands it to other city facilities as well. The alternative to that would be as we went to someone, we'd bring the lease before you. It's just for ease of doing business.
It also would only apply to items that are within a program authorized by the city council in the budgeting process, so it is a program over which you have already conducted some consideration, and the term also cannot exceed two years.
Thank you. Okay.
Motion to approve CC2, CC6, and CC12.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous.
Motion to approve CC4.
No, 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 no. Did you want to speak on CC4?
No, I spoke last night.
Okay.
Second.
Can this vote? It's one abstention for...
Abstention by Councilmember Smith.
It's free vote.
That was a no vote. Okay.
All right, let the record reflect it's a no for Mr. Smith. All right, public hearing, item one. Any speaker cards?
No speaker cards. Can we waive the staff report?
Let's waive it. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve PH1.
I will second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. New business item one, any speaker cards?
No speaker cards.
Let's waive the staff report. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve NB1.
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. NB2?
We have speaker card on NB2.
City clerk... Who's presenting, Barbara Boswell? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Crist, and members of the city council. The item before you or for consideration is adoption resolution number 14-75, which amends our resolution establishing a compensation schedule for nonrepresented employees, as well as adding one position to our workforce count. The city is continually, or staff is continually looking, reviewing its organizational structure to find opportunities to make improvements and become more efficient. With the adoption of the budget, the city council approved adding an assistant city attorney position, which was, came through the contract with Stradling, Yacka, Carlson, and Ralph. This added position has proven to be very beneficial to the city. Now that we've had some experience with this new position, it's apparent that bringing the position in-house will result in a cost-saving to the city without impacting service levels. The position will continue to report to the city attorney, Allison Burns, and also through to this, directly to the city council. With that, our recommendation is that you adopt the resolution and add the position.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Reeves?
I made a mistake, Marvin, on my speaker cards. I'm going to speak on 2 and 3, and not 3 and 4 together. 4 will be separately, so this is for 2 and 3. A long time ago, I recommended that city attorney be elected position, and I'm gratified that at least the assistant city attorney will be a city employee. But I have a comment. You know, the training, assistant city attorney is a good training ground for attorneys and potential city attorneys. I still believe that the city attorney should be a city employee or elected by the people, and I'm gratified that we're going to have an assistant city attorney who is a city employee. However, you know, we could hire two attorneys to be assistant, a city attorney, new lawyers to assist the city attorney, and get more bang for our buck. That's something to consider in the future, instead of having one assistant city attorney who's a public employee, have two. And we can get some people who are the top in their law classes to come and work for the city. You know, there's an old story of one guy who came out of Duke Law School, and he was an assistant city attorney for Whittier, and one day he became president. I'm not saying that the city attorney will become president, but it's a good training ground for potential lawyers and future city attorneys. So in the future, we may consider putting that on the ballot to have the city attorney appointed a public employee or elected by the people, and have the two assistant city attorneys to assist him or her. Thank you.
Do you think we could get an attorney to work for what we get paid?
I'm going to shut my mouth.
Okay. Okay, with that, I will make a motion that we adopt resolution 14-75, amending resolution 14-64, and add one position to the workforce count, bringing the total to 252.25.
I will second that.
Let's vote. Okay, NB3. Any speaker cards?
No speaker cards.
Let's waive the report. Is there a motion?
A motion we approve NB3.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. NB4, any speaker cards? Okay. Any communications?
No communications.
Elizabeth Brubaker will give us the report. Make it riveting, would you? People are getting bored. Make it riveting.
I'll try. I'll try and be so exciting over this subject. Good evening, Mayor Paris and city council members.
Good evening.
The Los Angeles Homeless Service Authority, LASSA, is a joint powers authority created by the city and county of Los Angeles for the purpose of planning, coordinating, and managing resources for homeless programs. Funding of the Winter Shelter Program through LASSA, who is the lead agency in the HUD-funded Los Angeles Continuum of Care, and coordinates and manages over $70 million annually in federal, state, county, and city funds for programs providing shelter, housing, and services to homeless persons. The Winter Shelter Program was established to address the basic shelter and service needs of homeless persons during the period in which Los Angeles County usually experiences its most inclement weather. The Winter Shelter Program will operate from November 1, 2014, to approximately March 2015. The city of Lancaster has received $73,255 for the Winter Shelter Program to be utilized for operating and supportive costs associated with providing shelter, housing, and services to clients of the Lancaster Community Shelter. Please authorize the city manager or his designee to facilitate the LASSA Winter Shelter Program at the Lancaster Community Shelter and appropriate $73,225 to account number 261-4542-770 to fund these programs. Any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It was almost riveting. Michael Reeves?
Mayor, council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. You know, we've talked about this for the last four years, the homeless thing, and you've known, if you haven't known, my philosophy on it is that we should partner with someone. But that being said, you know, we have a lot of homeless veterans in this, in this community. And I've tried to work with Antelope Valley Healthcare District in trying to move the clinic from Lancaster Boulevard over to Antelope Valley Hospital, because I feel that with the new law that's passed, that if a veteran cannot get an appointment at the nearest VA, and it's more than 40 miles from his home, he can go to a private physician or a private hospital. I asked Antelope Valley Hospital to look into it, the chief operating officer, and he didn't do it. And at a public meeting, I asked him again about it, because I think it's a great source of revenue for the community. Also, it gives us a foothold in trying to get an inpatient VA facility here. The hospital has the facility over there. They can underbid anybody. It would be beneficial if the veterans could go to the hospital instead of the clinic over here, and then after we start that, we could see if the VA would put some beds in and make an outpatient, excuse me, an inpatient hospital. I'm still working on that, and you know I've talked about getting a VA hospital up here for the last six years. This may be a way to do it. I've talked to Steve Knight about it. Steve Knight believes that he's not into building buildings. He kind of favors the policy that the VA will have, that the veteran can go to the nearest doctor or hospital. So we have a lot of things working for us, and I would hope that the city would support us trying to move the clinic over to the hospital and making AV Hospital a base for the veterans in the Antelope Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move NB4.
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. NB6? Any, one speaker card? Mr. Draco? Oh, Captain Nelson? Both of them.
Captain Nelson didn't hear you. He was on the phone.
Good evening, Mayor Paris, city council.
There's no texting while meeting, okay?
Hopefully, it was an emergency call.
Captain Nelson's always working, sir.
Yes, never stops. We're here to speak to you tonight just to introduce some planning that we're doing as it relates to some proposal to expand citationability of our administrative site process. For the last six years, we've been faced with several things that have occurred in the public safety arena specifically as it relates to the incarceration of individuals who committed crimes in our state. You know, initially, with the Department of Corrections Institution of Nonrevocable Parole, where individuals who were considered low-level offenders were released from state prisons and with no supervision and no cause for conditions of parole. Next came AV 109. AV 109, which is more of the restructuring process for the state prisons and identified, again, what they identified as low-level offenders and passed them on to the jurisdiction of counties throughout Los Angeles, excuse me, through the state of California, specifically in Los Angeles County. We've been the recipient of the largest number of those individuals released in our county. Then along came a, from Governor Brown, a instituting a deferral sentencing program that a lot of the public has not heard about yet through AB 2124, which is, allows our judiciary to defer cases up to 12 months on any misdemeanor offense, meaning those individuals who committed those crimes are still walking amongst us. Now, lastly, with Prop 47, and this is really what we're here to talk about. Prop 47, which was voted in on November 4th and enacted on November 5th, with really no preempting planning on the part of agency throughout the state, and how it was represented to the public and what it really is are two different things. And just in general, that's reduced a number of crimes that were considered felonies in the past and reduced those to misdemeanor offenses. That's also changed the laws that relates to commercial burglaries, reduction down to petty theft. It changed dollar amounts, which I'll have the captain talk about. And then as it impacted us, we're up to several thousands of individuals in Los Angeles County are now eligible to have, be resentenced and petitioned to court. So it places a tremendous burden on the courts, the district attorney, the public defender's office, as well as the sheriff's department here locally for us. So what we're looking at is at working together with Jocelyn Corbett and Captain Nelson and the DA's offices, discussing potential for the city's ability to invoke separate issues into the municipal code regarding certain low-level misdemeanors and municipal code violations that we could do, handle through an administrative site process, rather than using resources that we have, what are considered noncriminal acts at this point, especially with the cost that's imposed for deputies' time, and really pursue what is considered to be more, are more egregious-type crimes. So with that, I'd like to have Jocelyn come forward and...
Just like to expand on what he was saying. You know, even though some of these crimes have been brought down to misdemeanor, we could approach them from a prosecution point of view, but, you know, the courts are already, as you know, the resources have been sucked dry from the courts that are already completely overwhelmed. I was actually in court for an arraignment last week. The first two hours of court were spent on Proposition 47 petitions, and they literally had to go count by count by count and calculate what was what. It was unbelievable. They were overwhelmed. I think if we expand the ad-site process, so we include some of these misdemeanor offenses, if we approach it from a monetary point of view, so that there are monetary penalties for people who are offending, this might persuade them not to do so, at least not in this city. I think this is pretty cutting-edge. I'm not sure any other city is really doing this, so it's going to be interesting to see how it flushes out. But we're going to start drafting on the ordinance now. I've actually begun it, and we expect to bring something to you in January.
Who gets the money?
We do.
We do?
Yes.
We don't have to wait.
Yeah. What I'd like to just have the cabinet talk about some of the impact and things that they're dealing with on a management level procedurally for the sheriff's department, and then just potentially on some of the crimes that were former felonies, that the impact they have far-reaching beyond just that specific crime, and how they create resource management issues for us here.
Good evening. The full impact of Prop 47 is going to be probably several months, if not years, in the making, so I really can't comment on exactly what the results may be. I can say that there's several violations that were at one time considered felonies that obviously are no longer the case. The department, at this point anyway, is going to be treating those violations the same as we have in the past in terms of booking. Clearly, the cases won't be charged as felonies. Specifically, Lee asked me to talk about the drug offenses that are now misdemeanors, and those are simple possession of methamphetamine, cocaine, heroin, and ecstasy, and so-called date rape drugs, which I believe our new assemblyman is already working on in the state assembly. But one of the things that, and I empathize with those that are dealing with addiction, but one of the things that seems to be lost on those that advocate for decriminalization is that the methamphetamine addict, the cocaine addict, they typically finance their addiction through theft. And breaking into their neighbor's home, stealing from their family, shoplifting at the local Target, all of those offenses that come with the addiction have now been, I don't want to say lessened, but as a result of this, will have drastic changes on our ability to hold persons for violations of those offenses. And it's my, also my understanding after talking with Jocelyn, that the mandated treatment that came with possession through Prop 36 is no longer mandatory, which leads me to believe that the treatment claims of those that were proponents of 47 may not have been entirely accurate. Again, my main focus is the fact that those that were typically arrested for possession of any of those dangerous drugs can now only be arrested for a misdemeanor, and typically, because of the space problems that everybody's aware of, won't be held for any period of time, and they will be free to be out victimizing others to finance their addiction.
And if I could just add, excuse me, Captain Nelson, expound on what he was talking about with respect to the drug treatment. There was an article in the LA Times a couple of weeks ago that... There was an article in the LA Times a couple of weeks ago that indicated that Prop 47 is actually already having a negative effect on drug treatment. One day at the Victorville Courthouse, 24 people appeared for drug court, where defendants agreed to treatment in exchange for reduced penalties. 14 of the 24 had their cases reduced to misdemeanors and dropped out of treatment. So it's not even doing what it was really intended to do. It's having quite the opposite effect.
Yeah, that's interesting. At the end of the day, we're stuck with it. So let's start working on how we deal with it.
That's what this is about, sir.
I get that. It also occurs to me that we should be asking the sheriff to speed up the plan for the county jail over, what, at the Merrill Oma site? Is that where he's doing it?
It's for a female detention center.
You know, the problem we have now is there's no penalty. There's no penalty for almost anything. The, I mean, not too long ago, we had a client who was just, I mean, his life was destroyed by a guy who was drunk, on drugs, and naked when he was driving down the street. And he did three days. Three days. I mean, it's insane what's happening. But that is the law. So what are we doing to get the jail facilities to at least make them do the year? Perhaps we should be asking the prisons to give us a prison and cut a deal with the other counties. I mean, there's all kinds of options we need to do, but we need to do them pretty quickly.
I agree. I think for this purpose, this is something we can impose in a place that has some kind of punitive effect and has some longevity effect. You know, persons that don't pay fines, they're in our structure now, can be subject through the state taxation board, they can do things through the DMV, things we can do as a municipality that are not typically done through the court, just to impose some type of penance. The reality with the county is the sheriff's department's been suffering this for some time. If we go back, all the way back to the sheriff's early release policy based on the lack of funding provided by Los Angeles County for maintenance of the jails. So historically, we've been going through a process where the sheriff, in fact, in one year, took a $120 million cut in one year. You know, and that had a direct impact on custody division. So typically now, even someone that's sentenced to 180 days, the average is about 16, 17 days of incarceration based on that formula. So yes, I agree with you. Definitely on a county-wide basis, especially for expansion of the jails, is something that's a huge priority right now. It's just how much funding is out there to be able to do that and how fast they can do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Allison, in light of the Ninth Circuit opinion on concealed weapons, you know what I'm talking about?
Oh, yes, of course.
Can we do an ordinance allowing the city to issue gun permits?
That is a sheriff function.
Is it still a sheriff function in light of the Ninth Circuit opinion?
It is still a sheriff function to perform the background checks and do all of those steps, but they can't, they can no longer, in light of the Ninth Circuit ruling, deny for simple self-defense. They can no longer require you to show a heightened level of threat to you or risk associated with your job or your personal activities in order to get that concealed carry permit. I'm assuming that's the case you're talking about.
Yes.
It's a concealed carry case? Yeah.
Look into it.
All right.
Thank you. Okay. We don't need to do a motion or anything at this point?
We have a speaker card.
Ed, come on down. You're looking awfully Christmasy today.
That's why I work. Got a little Christmas spirit here. Your honor, councilmember, Proposition 47 was passed by 60% of the population that voted. Proposition 47 contains portions of the vehicle code, the penal code, the health and safety code, the government code. The title is the Safe Neighborhood and School Act. Safe Neighborhood and School Act. And primarily, this whole act is about felony convictions, felony propositions, felony convictions that children have to have for the rest of their lives. And you go through it, I've gone through it, and not only, up until 18 years old, when somebody gets stopped for the mere possession, the mere possession of pot, they file a felony against them. That felony will be on the record for the rest of their lives. And to get that taken off is very, very difficult, as you well know. There are, not only the pot situation, the vehicle code section, driving without a license, driving a hit-and-run for a teenager can result in a felony. And that's when he's going to carry that felony for the rest of his life. Now, this is a good proposition. It passed with more than half the people that voted to pass it. And I think we should look at it. And I understand we have a lot of problems in doing it. And actually, the sheriff's department is going to have a lot of problems. The city attorney's office is going to have a lot of problems. The judges have been given discretion by this proposition. To go over these propositions, they can look back at the kids' records and find out if they have been committing these type of crimes, then they can themselves put on a felony on it. But to put a felony on a kid when he's not even a kid, he's not an adult yet, he hasn't been thinking like an adult. We've all done a lot of stupid things when we were young, and they're still doing them, and the children will still do them. We have to look at that, look at this proposition and how we're going to resolve it and work on it. And I think it's really, this is the future we're talking about. This is not what's going on now, but this is the future of our community. And our children need at least one chance. Thank you.
You know, I think we're past the stage of saying it's a good proposition and bad proposition. It's the law. It's our job to follow the law. We'll do it. I hope we could do it with some level of punishment, simply because I think when people are immune from punishment, they, we all know how we behave when we're immune, don't we? Okay, thank you. Move to receive and file. Is there a second?
Second.
That's a... Isn't science wonderful? I'm smelling a rat here.
There you go. You don't have to write on this to your file.
All right, let's do it earlier. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous.
I'm sorry.
What?
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. All right. Council reports. Vice Mayor Crist.
ABTA, they were looking to, at the rate structure from ABTA. With the rate structure, they were looking that, they were looking at, should we charge seniors, should we charge the handicap, and should we charge veterans? The city of Lancaster stand was that we were not going to charge those, that class of people for rides on the ABTA. We currently have a 24% rate box recovery in the state of California and federally. From what I'm understanding, is that the national average is 20%. So we're the only community that actually allows the seniors, the handicap, and the veterans to ride for free. We also had quite a discussion in regards to diesel buses versus electric buses. Those, the councilwoman from the jurisdiction of Lancaster made the motion that we should buy the buses, electric buses, because the ABTA did vote a resolution unanimously that the ABTA was going to go electric. ABTA, somebody there wanted to buy eight diesel buses. And our bus fleet is in better shape than it's ever been before. It's 15% better off than it was a year prior. So I want to commend the councilwoman for making that motion and what she did there.
Well, thank you, Vice Mayor, but as we know, it takes the whole team. And the board is very much in agreement with that. As our vice mayor shared, the whole board unanimously voted in the past for the goal of the electric buses. And to bring that back to the table and try and have us to reevaluate that vote, to try and bring some diesel buses, was not acceptable. And so we are continuing forward to make sure that the goal is being reached with the electric buses. And as we all agreed and said that if our supervisor, Michael Antonovich, gave a million dollars for the electric buses, and if he believes in us, who are we not to believe in us? So we will continue forward, and we're going to make sure it happens.
Thank you. Councilmember Mann?
Yeah, we didn't have, but only one major item on the agenda in our last meeting on November 20th. I was taken by surprise because it was voting on where to place the reserve monies for the next coming here. And here's one for you. There is $3 billion in the Los Angeles County Sanitation District's reserve fund. It's $3 billion. And I had to ask twice. And so, anyway, the discussion was, is where are we going to place that money? And the money's going to be placed with Freddie Mac and Fannie Mae at approximately 2%. And we gave jurisdiction to the manager to be able to place that money. So when I was doing the math, that's $60 million a year collected in, even at 2%.
So how do we get some of that?
I know. That's what, I just can't believe, when you take a look at the size of the sanitation districts in Los Angeles County, I was just so taken back. I mean, I did the math, that's 60...
We could put graywater systems in every house.
Yeah, that's what I said, $60 million. Take a look at the reserve account.
How about just lower?
And then I asked how they divvied up those dollars, because I said I really have a rough time when we commingle bucks. And their simple formula was, it's based on the gross revenue generation of all the sanitation districts are then divided into that total amount. And that's kind of their quasi-reserve fund, how the monies are divvied up. Isn't that amazing?
What do you think?
I think there's a bunch of money in, I really do. So as time goes by, my intention is, is to try to see if we can't single out, because unfortunately, the operation, the collection and the operation of our sanitation district is commingled in with Los Angeles. It'd be really neat to be able to carve that out and take a look. The management and the operation of the facility here is being managed both by the same individual managing both our facility and Palmdale. But I just get a sense that somewhere down the road, there's something there, Mr. Paris. I really do.
Take a look at this.
I just think...
Figure out a way.
I have a question.
Sure. Don't you have a lot of money, man?
Don't you have a bond out for the sanitation?
Yeah, now, the bond is getting remortgaged, and I told you there was going to be about, if I recall, about 20-some million-dollar savings. And so hopefully, next year, we can take a look.
But why, what is the bond being remortgaged at?
I believe it was at, I'd have to go back to my notes, but it was going to be about a $20 million savings.
But why can't you buy the debt back?
Yeah, that was another question that was not answered yet for me, is why we can't use the funds. Because we're getting 2%. They had four different types of instruments out there that they were placing the monies to generate income. And Freddie Mac and Fannie Mae instruments was the highest return, and it was about 2%. The next one down, the next tier down, was like 1.6, 1.7, and then, and I'm doing this off the top of my head. But we voted to place that. Isn't that phenomenal, that money?
Why do you need a huge reserve on, I mean, it's not like your customers get to not pay you.
Well, if it's that big, just buying the debt back or funding your own capital projects seems...
Yeah, yeah. It's amazing how these guys, what I don't understand is, I just think it's a big, it's turned into a big gorilla, and they just, they operate it the same way day in, you know, from year to year. And I don't think anybody really challenges anybody to stop and say, hey, wait. Because that's the reason why I said I raised that question about whether or not, next year, whether or not we can potentially return some of those monies back to people in their tax bill. You know, the story right now, so you understand, we're in the final stages of closing out all the expenditures that were used to build that sanitation facility. So there's a sense from staff that they're, they don't want to take any aggressive actions until all the dollars are appropriately accounted for, and then we'll have a greater picture. So I think right now is, is obviously, they're, my opinion, I think we're, overcalculation has taken place, and I think we're collecting more dollars. And until we get the finalization, and hopefully it'll be the close of this year or the first of, maybe the first quarter of next, we'll get some conclusionary, you know, where the dollars are at, and then we can really see how much money we really need to be charging.
Do we have anybody in your firm that does sanitation districts and billing? Let's find out if they're billing it appropriately. And then if they're not, make them give it back to us, or at least refund it to the ratepayers. You know, one of the things we did is just audited all the people we have different agreements with, hundreds of thousands of dollars. How much to date have we recovered?
Over half million.
They were just overcharging us. $3 billion in reserves, I smell a rat.
That's a lot of money. I mean, I know there's quite a few sanitation districts, but gosh darn. And when I did the math, I go, holy, wow.
At least now we know why they were renting office space nobody was in.
Anyway.
All right, thank you.
Lot of money.
Any other council reports? I'd like on the agenda next meeting, moving the meetings to one meeting a month instead of two, and let's just get the public discussion going on that, okay? At least on the times when we don't have a lot of on the agenda, a lot of items on the agenda. I mean, we can always add flexibility to it, okay? No action on the housing authority, no action on the financing authority. City manager?
Couple of announcements, a lot of important, just an observation, a lot of important items on this agenda, so, that are going to do good for the community. We had our grand opening of the American Heroes Dog Park today. It was a great event, a lot of people out there, a lot of dogs. It's something that I really want to compliment the council on. A lot of folks have been asking for that downtown, and particularly the seniors, and it's going to provide a great benefit. I must say that Sandra's dog was particularly dismissive of my dog, which she took offense to, but other than that, it was a great event.
That little dog?
Yeah.
His dog would not stop flirting with my dog, let's be honest.
And her dog couldn't give Leo the time of day. Magical Boulevard Christmas is this Saturday. It's always a great event. Looks like we're going to dodge the rain by a mere 12 hours, but come on out, it's going to be great weather, and we're going to have a lot of fun, Saturday from 5 to 9. The, want to have people pay attention to what the Boulevard Association has done over the last year and what they're doing now. They're doing more advertisement, they have more services out there for cleaning the boulevard, for providing security, they have more Christmas programming, and they're really doing an amazing job. And want to encourage people to go out and support those small businesses. They're really stepping up with the money that they've taxed themselves. Lastly, some of you read in the paper today, the article on MetroLink, and there was a lot of congratulations of the different agencies congratulating each other. No one congratulated the people who should have been congratulated, which are the mayor and the council, for actually bringing the issue to light and shaking the tree and getting people to finally act.
Imagine that.
Yeah, well, that's people that know, have been following the story, know why it happened. But one thing, particularly... happened. But one thing of particular interest was, in the two-week period, they had 737 people either turned away from not paying or issued citations. That's an average, if you include weekends, of 53 people a day. When we went out and did 67 during the week, we had National Public Radio and all the publications calling us liars and doing stories that that can't possibly be true, that we observed people that appeared to not have paid. So I'm assuming we'll get that same kind of attention now from the rest of those media outlets.
Lee has been vindicated. Your informal-
Again.
Get a dollar for every time we heard that.
Again.
I was the happiest person, believe me in the balance, to see that art.
Mr. Bozegian, I am getting tired of complaints about Lancaster Boulevard, people not feeling safe, people being accosted. I don't care if we have to put a police officer on every corner through this Christmas season. We are the highest paying city for law enforcement in the county. It seems to me, we can have one mile, one mile, that is absolutely crime-free. Am I making myself clear?
Um, yes, you are.
Thank you. I, I, I do not understand this.
Um, it would be helpful if we could talk to some of those folks as well, too, to get the particular incidents they're talking about.
I will give you the complaints.
Okay.
I don't want to open up Facebook and see somebody a block from the sheriff's station on a bench smoking a joint. You know, it's not the image I want for a city. I do not want to go to a Christmas parade and see a pit bull without a license on the, on the collar. That Boulevard has to be zero crime, absolutely safe. And if it takes one every corner, put one on every corner. Okay?
Thank you.
City Clerk?
This is the time for the citizens to address the city council on matters not on the agenda. Speaker cards can be found at the back of the room. Please fill out the speaker cards completely. Speakers are limited to three minutes each, and state law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Rosemarie?
Yanni.
Yanni. I'm gonna get it right one of these days. Come on up.
Mayor, City Council, staff, and ladies and gentlemen, just wanted to present an idea. We live in Southern California, where there are a lot of mountains. And when the rains come, the mountains tend to slide. So I was thinking, we all know, we go to the fire department, we get the sandbags, we do as much as we can. But what if we can go to the fire department, not only get the sandbags, but get those plastic liners that we can put around the homes, around the mountain sides and everything, so that when the rain comes, the liners would be staked in. When the rain comes, the rain would fall on the liners, not on the ground, protecting the ground, and the water could be diverted to wherever we wanted it to go. So it can water the plants, it can water whatever, it can even go into a water plant, and we can save the water that we don't get during the five years of the drought. That was my idea. So we save housing, because it doesn't slide, because the water's on the plastic liners. And I know the manufacturers make them like huge. And we can just have the people go to the fire departments, not only get the sandbags, but get the liners as well. And if it is a major industry or development or whatever, then Caltrans can put those liners out, just like they put out the little orange cones. And then they can pick them up. And that is my idea for trying to save the housing industry when the rain and the mudslides come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Check with the fire department, Mr. Bozegian. Thank you. Wally Belendez?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff, fellow Lancasterans. In, in reference to the accident that happened on K Avenue and 25th Street West, the driver was going at a high rate of speed, a bad tragedy. The, the, the speed limits in Lancaster are, are too high. I've mentioned this before, I see signs for 45 miles per hour, and I've, I've even seen them 50 miles per hour in the city. And that's too high. City limits inside the city should be 35 miles per hour. And in residential areas, they should be 25 miles per hour. You know that when you put a speed limit up there, people are gonna press on the gas and get an extra five or 10 miles per hour over the speed limit. Everybody does that. It's, 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 it's a human thing. So if you put them down, if you change them to 35 miles an hour, now you're talking about 45 miles an hour, 45 miles an hour. There's a lot of crazy drivers in, in Lancaster. I mean, there's, there's just a lot of crazy drivers. And there's a lot of criminals, like, like you've been talking about. And they don't, they don't respect, they don't respect the law, they don't respect the pedestrians. So that, that, that should be thought, thought about, and done something about it, about, and having, and having enough speed limits of 35 miles an hour, so that everybody knows what the speed limit is. You know they're gonna cheat 5, 10 miles per hour, but at least, you got them down to, to, to 45 instead of 55, when they cheat. Everybody cheats, sort of. When I moved here from California City, in California City, they had some state, state-of-the-art duplexes. So I was under the wrong impression that, that, that I was gonna be able to find a state-of-the-art duplex in Lancaster. I was sadly mistaken. Right now, I pay for a house, a junk house, $1,200 per month. It's leaving me broke every month. A duplex is a median rent level between, between a house and an apartment. We are in dire need of state-of-the-art duplexes in Lancaster.
Thank you. Kurt Boyer?
Once again, good evening. I seem to be lucky enough to come to the city council meetings where I hear so much good things. It's, it's amazing. I don't know how I pull it off. First of all, Mr. Mayor, I did not get the chance to thank you personally for getting my clinic recognized through the city with Mr. Bozegian. And of course, we would like to continue that. We are involved directly, it's parts Altadena. We are involved directly with the census that's coming up in January, where we actually go out and count the homeless. I know the city has some, some goings on with that as well. And we want to offer anything we can do, any assistance we can give the city, as well as that's concerned. We're working with different churches, desert vineyards on board. And it's very important to us that we, we take care of the homeless. And it's very important to us that the city is provided the funding to take care of the homeless based on this census. You know, we deal with the homeless, and I know today, one of the topics was the problems with drug usage in the city. And yes, you're right, it's rampant. I, I work the Boulevard, I work the neighborhoods, we go out in the desert. And it is very prevalent. There's no doubting that. It's unfortunate, but it's true. The two seem, seem to be intrinsically tied together. And jail time, although I recognize it's an important thing to do, it certainly is. If you don't have some level of punishment for people that break the law, then they're going to continuously break the law. But at the same time, these are the homeless that we're welcoming in our door. I've lived in different locations around Southern California, Hollywood for a short period of time, and drug usage is rampant there as well. But Lancaster has a huge per capita homeless population. And I heard numbers from the last census that it was something like 393% or something bizarre like that from the last count taken. So we're offering our services, any way we can do this. If we can help with people that are addicted, we want to help with people that are addicted, not just the homeless. We also want to help with the mentally ill. And as I said, it tends to be all three, find their way together, one way or another. So anything else we can offer, sir? I'd love to set up an appointment with you personally, if I could. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to sit in on that first meeting, prior obligation, but I'd love to communicate with you directly on all these things. So I thank the city for backing us. We are so appreciative, and we look forward to our, our future relationship. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Corbin Ingram?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and other city personnel. The reason why I'm here is because I have written, I write several grants, and I write a lot of research programs and things of that nature. What I'm putting emphasis on today is a research project that I initially submitted to, to the Environmental Protection Agency under the SBIR program. I know you don't vote on anything right now. But this research program basically takes mammal hair, human hair, and turns it into wall insulation. I have a prototype I've put together right here, if you want to take a look at it. What I want, and what I'm asking of the city of Lancaster, council members and so forth, is to support, support me. Support me, and hopefully, I know you can't vote on it here, maybe we can put it on the agenda later on down the road. But to provide me a letter stating your support of this project. Now, or this research. The thing with this research, it's not so much me creating wall insulation, it's creating jobs. I have stats I put together where it shows I could take, basically, if we have 1 million people, which is half our armed forces personnel, for one year, that would generate roughly about 1.65 million square feet of hair when it's thick. I could take that and almost generate about, insulate enough houses, let's say 900 houses, roughly about 3,000 square foot houses, with an R factor of R13. But what I'm getting at is, I know I'm playing beat the clock here also. What I'm getting at is, jobs. The process of taking this human hair and converting it, to me, is not that, that earth shaking. Because I understand the amino acids and so forth, so on. I do have that kind of background. The thing is creating jobs, not just white-collar jobs, or, but blue, blue, excuse me, blue-collar jobs also. So I don't know how I can get a support letter from you, but maybe you can let me know what I can do and where I can go. I've already solicited our new congressman, Steve Knight. I've been on talk show radio down in Los Angeles. And I need your support.
Mark, uh, have somebody check it out, all right? And if it's viable, we'll, we'll give you what you want. Okay?
Okay. I have a write-up, if you want to take a look at the write-up also.
Uh, give it to the city manager, and we'll, we'll run it through. Thank you, Mr. Ingram.
Thank you.
You're up. Sir, 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 sir.
Well, good evening. Mayor Paris?
I'm sorry.
Vice Mayor Chris, and counsel, and ladies and gentlemen. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Bozegian's office. They did get in touch with the senior center, and they are going to have a meeting on January 21st about the roundabout, to explain to the seniors. So thank you very much for that. I don't know how you're gonna take this, but I'm gonna just tell you. On January, on December 2nd, I went to the Board of Supervisors meeting at the library. My subject was the building of a new senior center building, because we need one desperately. I know there's monies out there spent for other things, that maybe some could be shifted to the senior center. But what I projected to the supervisors, especially Antonovich's office, if, because the famous word is partnership. So I thought if LA County supervisors and the city of Lancaster, city council, and maybe even outside entities to get together and raise money to build our senior center, because we're bursting at the seams over there. They do a lot of good work, a lot more than a lot of the other senior centers do. Let's see. I, and I did, nobody told me to do this. I just, it just came to me from heaven somewhere. But we were, I was given, I went to the senior center to speak to the director about this. And she said they were giving out, that they had the survey for the people to sign, this one here. But a lot of people are not gonna understand what the survey is about. Tomorrow, they're supposed to be having a meeting at the Cedar Center, Art Center, right down Cedar in Lancaster, around 10 o'clock, which I'll be going and hopefully explain it, because a lot of people don't, sure. Anyway, that's it for that. When I went to the supervisor meeting real quick on December 2nd, by December 3rd, Mr. Hickey, Norm Hickey, called Angela Director, and we have a meeting set for December 18th. And he specifically asked for me and her, December 18th, at 9:30, at the senior center, which we'll be discussing the building. I don't know. I mean, it was gonna be pro or con or whatever, but that's for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, somebody sent me a thing on Facebook about where they took an old Walmart, and they turned it into a community center, a library. Did you see that? It, it just, we got a lot of shopping centers that are, that are vacant, you know? Wouldn't that be, it just makes sense, rather than build a new building, you know? Well, they got $3 billion they're sitting in a reserve fund on sanitation.
Oh, I know.
Yeah. That's an idea, an office, a sanitation office building.
There we go.
Yeah. We could, we could make space for that.
But it has to be locally, so all the seniors can get to it.
No, of course, of course.
And not next to a roundabout.
Not really.
You're gonna like that roundabout, believe me.
I, I think I will, but.
You're gonna like the roundabout. You just gotta, you gotta see it to believe it.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So it's almost Christmas, and so I thought we would end the holiday spirit of Mr. Paul, who said he wants to talk about good stuff. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Counsel, good evening, and Merry Christmas.
Hi, I'm excited. I'm here mostly tonight to express my gratitude to this great city I live in. I feel such joy to be a member of this community. You know, they say, no battle plan survives first contact with the enemy. It's the training and the commitment of the men and women executing the plan that really matters. And this is what this city has. We have suffered the setbacks of the economic downturn- We have suffered the setbacks of the economic downturn, the folly of the county, and the racial troubles that sometimes overwhelm communities, and we've handled it because of the city council and this amazing city staff. I, I am in amazement of what you do. This is not done anywhere. I'm taking a class right now on verging science and philosophy to get to the bottom of some of these human conditions, and epistemic relativism means that people can't agree on what the criteria will even be for discussing things, and we have embodied cognition, that's why this class closes, talking about how our bodies and the environment are very important to how our consciousness expresses, and I see these things in a lot of the programs our city does, and it, it just really amazes me. Today, I had a great time at the dog park, what a fun thing. And out of all this stuff I've been learning lately, it comes down to the human experience, that's what matters. We had a wonderful parade, I wanna thank Sandra Smith for, the Chamber of Commerce, for allowing my son to come out and pass out programs for the parade. It was a wonderful event, the community came together, and everybody there enjoyed it. It didn't matter who you were, where you came from, it was the enjoyment and the community atmosphere that made it so uplifting, and, and it's so renewing. And yes, we have these problems, we have the homeless everywhere, but I know, and I, the audit you did, the Prop 47 address, the Metrolink, all these things, I'm amazed that we get these things done, and I'm proud to be a member of this community. And I know how hard everybody here works, and I know what an exception it is, and that's why I have such gratitude to this city, and I look forward to the next year and doing even greater things, so thank you, you have my gratitude.
Thank you. Okay, that's it. Any comments before we recess?
Yes, I do, thank you for asking, Mayor. Just wanted to tell, one, two things, actually. One is, I went to, surprise, to the grocery store this past weekend to go shopping for some food, and.
What?
She's. No.
Shelley Cook's toast.
So I went to get some bread, and.
That toast is pretty good, though.
That toast is really good.
It's really good toast.
And.
That's pretty good at it.
Yeah, after years of doing this. Ran into some, a couple that I hadn't seen in quite a while, and we were talking in the parking lot, and come to find out, we were discussing my father's passing, and I informed them how he came every council meeting, and he sat at a specific seat. And I just wanted to sincerely thank them right now, from the bottom of my heart, because I am celebrating the one year of his celebration of being with my mother and our mighty father, and they are here today, sitting at his seat, Mr. and Mrs. Gutierrez, and I wanted to thank you very much, from the bottom of my heart, being here to represent my father. Thank you very much. Thank you. On a different note, we are, the University of Alott Valley is having an event, it's called Caring for the Community, for any families that you know, not necessarily it has to be homeless, but any family that is in need, or that would like to experience a hot meal, we are having at the University of Alott Valley, Saturday, from 10 to 2 p.m. We have the pleasure of being able to cook there with our culinary students. Last year, we fed, I think it was 1,800 students, and gave away 1,200 toys, and that's through different organizations, one of them is through our children, it's called the TIF organization, gets donation of toys. However, we'd like to really thank Walmart, the Sheriff's Booster Club, and our Vice Mayor Marvin Chris for being a big part of this upcoming Care for the Community, and giving a lot of donations for our community. So hopefully, we'll see some of you guys there, and we're looking forward to having the honor of being able to feed over 2,000 families this year, so thank you.
Thank you. Captain Nelson. As radical as you wanna get with that new program, you'll probably find a receptive ear. Okay? Thank you. Okay, the city council will now move to closed session to discuss closed session items 1 through 10. Thank you for coming.
Are we on?
Yes.
Okay. In closed session, the.
You gotta do that for them.
Okay. In closed session, the city council discussed one item of anticipated litigation under item number one, number nine, Manriquez versus the city of Lancaster, and gave direction to council on, and staff on both items. No reportable action.
Hey, look who's back.
It wasn't me, I was doing some toast.
I thought I smelled something burning. Do you guys know what the penalty for mutiny is? Do you have any idea?
It was support.
Yes, sir, we were moving things right along.
Okay, I guess everything's done? From all of us at the city council, except the vice mayor, we wish you a very Merry Christmas, and wish you all the best for the coming year.
Yes, and the vice mayor didn't put up happy holidays, he wished everyone a Merry Christmas.
That's right. Feliz Navidad.
Merry, merry.
That's because the mayor represents everyone.
Yes, that's why the mayor said.
We're growing a Christian community. We are growing a Christian community that is welcoming everyone.
I agree.
Absolutely.
Okay, the city council meeting is adjourned until 2 C, January 13, at 2015, because of the holidays, at 5 p.m.